I've had contact with their attorney. He says that they're in contact with the guy at Soil and Water and they're taking care of that. I don't know why they're not telling us, giving us some kind of an email or something. I wrote back to him and asked him to give us an email about it because it was a phone message on my answering machine. I still haven't heard from him again, but hopefully that's going on. I'm gonna check with, tomorrow with the folks down at Soil and Water and make sure that they're not giving us a song and dance. Staben County, we sent a letter to them, tell them that, basically what the board wanted to do. We hadn't heard anything definitive about what's going on with the solar project, therefore we're gonna go ahead and have an evaluation of the timberdunk and Kohopton and Pratsburg a split. MNT bank litigation, I talked to, I mentioned to, Lynn, that I talked to Jamie Johnson at the IDA, he said there's nothing wrong at all with doing a pilot, and so therefore I went ahead and put that in the letter. I haven't heard anything, and I don't know if we will or not. And then on the union, or the uniform contract, I sent you a memo on that. It's typical uniform contract, very, very lopsided in favor of the company. But the best way to get out of it, if you really want to get out of it, is make yourselves miserable to them. So, that's about.
Could you explain MNT again?
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing.
Yeah, I was a little confused.
Explain it.
You said something about pilot, what?
Yeah, we talked about offering them a substantial reduction in their assessment.
Oh, yeah.
If they agreed to take back, I'm sorry, I skipped over the first page. If they agreed to keep it open and keep some of their original employees, that we give them a substantial reduction.
Uh huh.
The only issue was how we would accomplish that legally.
Right.
And therefore I talked to Jamie Johnson about some kind of a pilot agreement, and he said it's feasible. So I mentioned that in the letter. In addition to, as one option, the other option was just reduce it to 155, otherwise you're like...
I remember our discussion about, oh, we'll use it if they keep it, I just didn't term it as a pilot.
I skipped one step in trying to explain it.
So with that, the bank's closing date is the 7th, is that what it was, or the 9th?
About 8th.
9th?
I don't think that they're gonna go on, because the assessment they're adding out, it's only a few hundred bucks a year.
Yeah.
I think you figure...
They probably lose that in a couple of weeks.
Yeah. So, I doubt if we're gonna, but I figured it was a good 5,000 to try it. So, I think that's...
But it triggers something, you know?
Yeah. All right, I guess that's it. We'll go on to the... Wind law. I'll go through and mention the sections that I'm gonna change. Section 2 on the first page, legislative findings, that's been amended to a great degree.
If we find stuff, should we point it out while you're talking about that section?
Yep.
Okay, number 2, under section 2?
Yep.
I'm not quite sure, it says such potential detrimental impacts include, but property are not limited to, I don't quite...
That property should have been in the lower line, it's in the wrong spot, I already corrected it.
You did, okay.
Yeah.
And where would it go?
It would go right after habitat, after a comma.
Oh, okay, okay.
It's supposed to go down there, but it didn't end up there.
Got it, okay, that's fine. It just, it looked out of place, so.
So, if you want changes in that or additions, we can do it. I went through it and most of it. Any amendments other than the inquiries?
I like number 6. The addition of number 6.
Right. Well, I think it's sticking into our state as well.
And 7, paragraph 6.
Section 7?
Sorry, 7b6.
What page is that, PM?
Oh, it's page 7.
Oh.
Oh, you skipped ahead, okay.
Oh, sorry.
It's all right.
I thought you said you were 76.
No, no, I'm, yeah. I was number 6 on the legislative findings.
Oh, I got you, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's okay.
John really wants to get out of here.
Yeah.
We'll get to it eventually.
What about 7? Or what about, which one was it?
As well as site plans. On page 7, paragraph 6, towards the middle or just below the middle?
Paragraph 6.
Oh, yeah, as and.
Details are shadowed with?
Yeah.
Yeah.
In the second, or towards the end of it, as well as and site plans.
Is that any?
Yep, should be any, thanks.
So we'll probably go back to the...
Well, John was not by too much, page 6, 6d, page 6, 6d, is the paragraph we added about waivers for non-participating neighbors.
For the...
For the sound waiver.
Yes, and I actually have a question about that.
Of course.
The certified copy of the recorded waiver filed with town clerk of the town of Pratsburg, wouldn't, would that apply also to the setback for the tower setbacks? You don't have that permission, you just have to be required.
Well, we'll add that.
Office of the clerk, but for consistency, probably should both of them?
That's probably because this, when I was writing this one, I thought, oh, we should get a copy, but we can add that.
Probably get waivers for both of them would be good.
Yeah. We wanted to make sure that the training began before construction started, so in A, there's an added sentence at the end stating such training shall be implemented prior to commencement of construction. And then also on page 11, we've added the new section 12, notification of malfunctions. Any questions on that one? And that applies to towers outside of the town, too. I came up with an annual distance of within 1 mile of the town.
And what area were you gonna add about the advertising?
I have not added it, I'm going to add it, and I haven't decided where to put it yet. But it's gonna go in there, I've got a note to do that.
Was that...
So the logos, like on the blades, on the tower itself, everything?
They do it in most cases on the hub, but Vassal, I cannot say Vassal, we don't know, but Vassal's, Vassal's is huge, I mean, it's just flash room.
Yeah.
I mean, would it be its own section, or would it be...
It could be, I thought about that, but it's only one.
But it could also come under, like, shadow flicker?
It's a lane or something.
But I was thinking of, like either...
I'll put it in somewhere.
Okay.
I'll have to think about it some more.
I mean, because there, I mean, obviously you can't say, you know, no, I'll say signage, because there is some that safety signage.
No, no, it's gotta be, logos are advertising, not related to safety or functioning.
Yeah. I was gonna say, like mitigation of nighttime lighting there for the aircraft detection systems is almost like, it's a, it's a visual appearance, a visual thing.
Visual, right, right.
So like, it almost could be lumped in with that, but that is a safety thing versus a non-safety.
I thought about that, but...
It'd almost take away from the aircraft detection lighting, so.
Another heading in there is signage, because, you know, any signage they may have.
You know, that's a good idea, because signage having to do with safety should be visible from a certain distance, so you might have size, visible from 100 feet, something like that.
Well, I guess, I think you should even go with a height with it, you know, I think some natural hazard signs need to be, depending on what they're on, they need to be at least no higher than 10 feet. So to me, you put like a 10 foot threshold on it.
I never really looked for on any of the towers, they do, I mean, we have on our towers, they say good, all our towers, and...
Yeah, I think, I know the specs for the ones we're doing for RGD now, I have on grid, they're 10 foot, national grids 10 foot, for your warning.
But on wind turbines, I've never seen signage.
I've never looked at them.
I think there's some on the doors.
Never looked at them.
Then on the transformers outside, there's high electric shock.
Yeah, I've seen one, but I don't, I'm thinking about it.
Any comments on the notification of malfunctions? Then we go on to enforcement fund, I think this is another one of Tony's brainstorming. Again, the $30,000 figure is just an amount of money that I put in there.
What are you thinking?
So...
That is really part of, part of this, is the decommissioning, that just no way they can worm out of that, having a, a bank...
Well, we tried to make it as tight as we could, has to be a US bank, and if the bank goes belly up or something, they have to have something else in place within a certain amount of time.
Yeah, that's right.
I have a question about that, since Lynn brought it up. We have a provision to provide a cost estimate for decommissioning, are we putting that in today's dollars or 20-year up dollars?
I believe you'll find that as...
Didn't you talk about escalator, too, like is it every five, every five years?
Every five years. So every five years, we're reevaluating in terms of today's current days' dollars?
In terms of those, that day's dollars, correct.
Now, the enforcement fund, is it, explain what this money would or theoretically should be used for?
Would be used by the town in the event the town had to intervene in enforcement of any provision in.
So if the developer was negligent in responding to...
Correct, if they didn't respond properly according to the provisions for notification of issues.
Okay.
Non-revocable escrow account in the name of the town of Pratsburg, assessable for withdrawals by the town supervisor upon approval of the town board, paying for any expenses incurred by the town related to enforcement of any provisions of the content of this local law that is not determined by a citing agency to be overly burdensome. So they gotta get paid, oh, they gotta get past that. Also applies to the road preservation law, which conceivably could be more expensive than some of the other stuff. Rehabbing a road is big bucks.
As well as the citing permit itself.
Correct.
So, I think that covers our stuff, state stuff.
And then, any other questions on 13 enforcement fund? Then we have 14 enforcement and penalties. One of the problems with this is if you go, if you make this a misdemeanor, there's an entitlement to a jury trial, which could take a year before you get to it, assuming they're having jury trials then. So we're not having them now. So for that reason, I've made this what's called in the criminal law violation, maximum penalty for which is 15 days, or fine out exceeding $500. But I also put in that each day that failure to comply exists shall be an independent separate offense. So that, depending upon how rich they are, 500 bucks a day could add up.
That's got more teeth on it, I think, there's somebody like, A for a portion.
So, and I'm not sure if this fits in where, if it's in, but, do we? If we have a non-participating landowner that's having some approval, I don't know, approval is the right wording, but prove that they can, they're having groundwater issues, shadow flickering, vibration in their house, is there something we can put in this law to protect them for that, like they, if this issue consists, like they even, or is this something that's above and beyond us, where they have to litigate it? I mean, if they wanted to buy their, wanted the wind company to buy their house at firm or ability?
We're doing what we can to protect the property owner from issues that we know are likely to exist. The property owner, unless they're participating property owner, has their own rights, their own property rights, and if they have a problem that doesn't cover it with this, they have, and they can prove it, that the problem emanates from the, from the facilities or any components of the facilities, they could do something themselves. But what we're trying to do here is protect the property owners to the best extent that the municipality can do that. Now, if there's a groundwater issue, I don't know how we'd even put that in here. I don't know what the ground issue, the groundwater issue would be, whether it's interfering with an aquifer, or it's contaminating it.
I think it's all the above, right? I mean...
Could be.
But we have a lot, I know I'm, I'm well.
I'm well.
You know, and...
Well, everybody outside of the district's in a well.
Right, so I mean, it's a legitimate concern, I mean, I have some...
There it is.
There's some that are being, you know, potentially built across the road from me and behind my property, you know, how...
Right.
How far does that for go then?
You don't know, you'd have to...
Right, so...
Watch it.
So to me, I mean, obviously everyone on that hill has a well, so we need to...
That's true.
I'm thinking we need to have something in there stating, I mean, it's almost something that you'd have to, if you're within so many miles or feet or something from a possible turbine, that there should be something in there where it needs to be tested beforehand and after construction.
You know, of course, the gas they have to, I don't know what the limits are, whether that's made, you know, project by project, or if that's covered by state statute.
Problem is, most people don't know where that water comes from.
Yeah, proving causation, I know there's a number of people in Pennsylvania with private wells that have been lost or contaminated near fracking areas, and they get held up in court forever, it's a matter of providing causation or proving causation.
Well, probably, you gotta prove it, even with our enforcement, we gotta prove it.
Well, I think, that's why I was thinking, if we put something in there, some verbiage as far as, you know, being tested beforehand, within a certain radius, and tested after, and I think that should be the burden of the developer.
But who knows how far your aquifer comes from?
You don't.
Could be miles.
Well, you, you don't, I, again, I don't know what the magic number is, I don't know if it's a mile radius, or if it's two mile radius, or what the...
The only problem, there's one problem with that, is that anything can happen, which would necessarily be related to that.
Right, but you're gonna know, you're gonna know beforehand, you're gonna know after, even if you do a water sample, see what the water quality is, you can do a gallons per minute, test on it, and if that fluctuates right there, you know, you have a problem.
And this, how are you gonna prove it's the facility, though?
It's all timing, I mean...
Well, it could be, my well has serious production problems when it's dry, like last summer and the summer of '16.
And I think that's some consideration as well, I mean, in a normal year, I mean, if they're starting this in the spring, and they finish it up, you know, that particular tower, say, late fall, you're gonna know if your water changes in that amount of time, it's not gonna be years after that, it's gonna be immediate.
I understand what you're saying, I'm just not sure how you would establish it.
I totally agree with you, Tony, and I share your concern, from whatever, and the poor people in Pennsylvania with the fracking nearby, proving that the fracking well was 100% the cause, has been almost impossible for them.
Well, I think of their biggest problems, they, they weren't testing beforehand and after. I think it was the biggest, that's why I...
I would like to see a baseline established before, I mean, I'm totally with you, I just...
So, I mean, Red Soft and up that way, you had, you know, they had tons of...
Sure, they could destroy a well and...
Well, they did, isn't it? Red Soft ended up running water all the way through.
Same the one with the runs over in Hembra, but it's...
Again, I'm not sure...
You know what I'll do, I'm gonna get ahold of Kathy at LaVella, and see if they've got anybody on staff that knows water.
I would think so.
I would, like I said, just...
How deep do the baseball tower is?
They're pretty deep, they're stout, there's a lot of concrete, it goes in bad ways, too, I mean, they're...
They could be, up to 100 feet deep, aren't they? So they could very easily interfere with an aquifer, somebody that's not too far away.
Well, I mean, you don't know, my well's at, I dug down to 78 feet, and I knew her well.
And my water comes in at 100, so it's...
It's, it's a possibility that you could be affecting someone's water.
I have it all the time in mind, just getting rid of water runs out the top of it all the time.
You got too much water, send me over, son, while you're left.
He's got a pipe coming out of the reservoir.
Yeah, he's draining the tank up there.
I got a pipe running out of the top of the well to get rid of water.
I think you have a pipe up there anyways, the natural springs up there, isn't there that just flows and flows and flows?
I will get an answer on that.
And if you're gonna talk to Kathy, because this has got my mind reeling now, Tony brought up a good point.
Oh, shit, 3P.
No, sorry, I know, I know when they, when they dug or drilled my well, they stopped when they reached gas.
They stopped when they reached gas?
According to the well driller, I forget who it was, if someone local, might have been Moravec or someone, he said he stopped when he reached gas. Is there, is there any safety concern putting in these foundations, given the natural gas reservoirs around here or anything, is that...
It's potential.
I mean, there's, there's gas all over the place, I mean, and they put, I don't know if that's an issue, I'm not sure why he stopped when he had, I don't think I'm going to be again.
That's what they told me.
Well, I, Pete's assuming that he stopped because it was a danger.
Taste or whatever, no, I'm assuming he stopped for taste or any other number of things, I don't know.
That could be.
There's a couple of ponds in the area where it's bubbling all the time.
I mean, it's not like it's a, I mean, with the well casing, I mean, you're pretty confined where they're digging these foundations, I mean, it's pretty open, I mean, it's an open hole.
You're talking to a novice, that's the only reason I ask.
Right, yeah, 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 yeah. No, it's...
That's true.
I don't think it would ever be an issue, P, as far as a safety concern with that, as far as...
Well, when you've worked around these wind towers, Tony, how do they excavate it? They gotta just use a...
Escavator.
Excavator?
Uh huh.
If they go down 50 feet or more, it's gotta be a whole arm on it.
Sometimes they get in there with dozers, too, pond it out.
Okay, then square it off.
One of them, it just has a steel cage and they pour it in sections, and they backfill up to it, keep on pouring.
Start building the high-rise?
Yeah.
Interesting.
They have, I mean, I mean, not this big, but I'm doing it right now in Rochester, just did a 16, or I'm sorry, a 42-inch diameter hole, and we went down 30 feet, and that was with a conventional auger.
Who was that for?
Transmission tower.
Oh, a transmission tower.
Right downtown Rochester, right downtown Rochester, three feet off each high-speed rail.
Wonderful place to work.
Oh, that's a beautiful place. My homeless camp is pretty nice down there.
Probably got some amenities we don't have.
They do have nice porridge on over there.
Ah, Tony. The escrow, the enforcement fund?
Yeah.
I know when we originally did the agreement for the escrow, like in lieu of other funds that may become available to us, I can't think of the word right now.
Intervener.
Intervener funds, and it's refillable, like there's a balance has to be maintained. The verbiage in the enforcement fund doesn't read the same way, I don't think, that the agreement did. I don't know if we need to, like, if we use some, we're on a process.
That's up, that's up to us, it could be...
Right now, it just sounds like it's one time, once we put the 30,000 in, and...
That's correct.
That's it's gone, it's gone.
That's correct.
And we have no enforcement funds after that.
That's correct, so if the thing's there for 50 years, you got 30,000, and what's it worth four years from now?
Yeah.
That's another issue, inflation.
Because I think if we start to have enforcement issues, one might think that we have, would have more in the future.
If you start having enforcement issues...
Yeah.
You're gonna have enforcement issues.
So what are you saying, what are you saying, like per, like 3,000 per event?
Like, we have it right now, if it dips below a certain amount, they have to replenish it.
Well, we can make it more than 30 and have it, so when it gets down to 30, it's replenished.
Right.
Do like a 60, 50, 60?
Like a 60, 30 split, and then, what do we want in there for like a 5% escalator per year?
Have an inflation adjustment.
Right.
Based on a CPI, so we're pricing it, we could have it every five years.
But if it's, probably, there, as long as there's some kind of escalator, because it's gonna be good.
I was in a real rush to get this done, but I felt a lot better when you said the other night, it won't be till February, March, so we got a little time, I don't wanna deal with this in January. So, I'll make those changes and get around, well, we haven't gone to enforcement penalties. Anything you want to change on that? 500, most places you'll see 250 as a fine for a violation, but the maximum is 500, so I put the max in.
For the dollar amounts you're talking, it's, you don't want, I mean, you want it to be...
It's gotta have a bite to it.
Right, especially if they could have six...
And also you got the other...
Where it'd be $3,000 a day, or something.
Right, you got the other part of this thing, where you guys, somebody like Kevin going to the clink for 15 days.
Which is more than $500.
But the guy that goes to jail is probably gonna be in 10 buck, too, someplace.
It'll be Kevin, they'll throw him...
They'll throw him one of the last night.
One thing you're gonna hear is a horn honking, and...
He'll say...
Hook them out of the entire track over.
Kevin, you agreed to this local law. All right, anything else on that? We'll get those changes. We'll get those changes.
There are some typos I wanted to go through.
Yeah, go right ahead.
Okay, page three. I don't know if that's a typo, but it's more of a.
What abouts?
Toxic material.
Material.
No, no.
May became toxic.
Yeah, um, any substance which is harmful, dangerous, destructive, injurious, and or deadly, whether of itself or. Should it be which may become toxic? Or that may become toxic.
Well, should maybe come first, cause it's became there. I think you can read it away, but I think it sounds better with the witch in there.
Yeah. And then. Page four. My favorite. You still have liaisons spelled wrong.
Which line is that?
C. Construction hours, C.
Oh, yes, yeah.
Yep.
Liaison.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Then, um, farther down in A. Deciding permit shall contain blah, blah, blah. Um, Department of Agriculture market guidelines, is, should that be applicable to agricultural mitigation? Yeah. Applicable. It's the third line down in A.
Yep.
For me to curse.
Ah, good night. Grammar teacher over here.
This is good.
Oh, I'll take up that one.
Read some of my letters before they get.
Just a ball they give.
I hired you to figure out my stuff.
Angela, you should probably just.
Hi.
Are you gonna give more work?
We're gonna keep giving you this stuff.
I don't mind. I, I used to proof at the high school office, cause. Did you, did you know the principal, the high school office in Naples?
Which one?
Foster, Ken Foster.
Unfortunately, yes.
Spelled to save his life and he was the high school principal.
He should have remained a music teacher.
He should have remained a music teacher, yes, that's correct.
I hadn't, never mind.
Yeah.
One all time.
No use for the game.
Everything else I think we covered.
He was so bad, they couldn't get rid of him. They put him in an office or place and said, don't come out until your contract's up.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, it was dreadful.
Any more?
No.
No, that's just those. Yeah, he passed. I'm fired.
I got a C plus.
I always stay above that D, so.
I like it though. I like the, I think it's a good. The whole law is.
It's good in there.
It's, it's reading very well. I think it's.
Is LaBella seen this?
No, I didn't want to send it to anybody, so we got it where we wanted.
He didn't want to send it up, thinking it's probably liaison.
That's right. I did a spell check. I'm not sending it anywhere, so I need your spell checks. Cause obviously the computer didn't do a very good job. That's a problem. I used to spell like crazy, but. You rely on the computers.
Well, I don't know if the computer would catch that, because I think you had a slash, like liaison slash.
Our computer changes correct words to wrong.
Oh, I know. My phone does that. Or it suggests arbitrary bizarre words that I've never used.
First I was doing, I got one of those old wooden pulleys, the big heavy. Oh, yeah. And I was making, making a lamp out of it. And it's just for. Shits and giggles, it's for us at home. So I got a, a kind of pulley company. And then I looked at pulley, I left E. It's all strike right in. Oh, my God. I bet you were mad at yourself. Oh, I said, boy, I stand and stand and say, they get that L right there. Well, you could have said the company spelled it that wrong.
That's okay. I was reading the WXXI program guide one year and it was the letter from the president. And they kept referring to public broadcasting, except that they omitted the L in one of them.
That would be embarrassing.
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I said at least.
He wasn't happy when he saw it.
I bet he wasn't.
Yeah, I think this is good. You did a good job.
I think we got a pretty good product.
I don't think, you know, we try to protect everyone from everything. You know, like, is it groundwater or something? I was thinking of. This morning about Florida, I'm like, travels in and I'm like.
I mean, it's a concern.
It's, I think it's a concern, but I don't know. Again, reaching out to Kathy.
Well, I think. Problem is the science. LaBella would be the one to, to answer that, yeah, they. I'm sure they worked with it for. That's, that type of concern come off, I gotta believe that. And they do work with. Waterworks and all that too, so they certainly probably have people on staff. Work with it. Leonard, are you gonna try to set up that supervisors meeting again? Yeah, I'm, I'm just wanna be sure we're. Said here, I, uh. Well, I, I made one call and, well, I'm not gonna be there and it said, I don't think you're gonna get anybody from Kohaute either. And I said, well, then. I'll call you back. You know, when we. I said, we got another meeting tonight and I wanted to.
They don't wanna, they don't wanna meet and.
Yeah, no, they, they were. Doing it, there was something going on that were both of them were gonna be at.
Oh, 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 I thought they were just unwilling, but okay, it was just a conflict.
Well.
Yeah.
We brought that up. Got one of those meetings, maybe the second one about. Jointly negotiating. Nobody else was in it. None of the other towns were interested. You, you were there for that.
You just think it's foolish not to.
I do too. I couldn't understand that. I, I don't know, was it, the gist I got talking to someone. They're not, they haven't entered this like we have. Except for Kohaute. Well, Howard was, don't they? Howard was, yeah. But, uh. They were just, you know, they're, they're always kinda. Wanted to look and see how things are going and what's happening. And of course, they're working on wind laws. Where and what.
Well, in, in. I, I'm. Just guessing that if you have someone like Avoca, that where there were no towers at one point. And they have more towers now. They may say, we don't want to negotiate with you because you're driving them away. And if we let you speak for us, and, and I'm not saying that's, has anything to do with it, but I, like, they may, if, if, they may have a different opinion, I guess. Um, especially if they thought that maybe they gained more. Um, it, you know, so I just throw that out there, but.
That's sort of the.
As we saw some migration in that whole comment came up about others, like them not wanting to negotiate with us. It started across my mind that from their perspective, not that it changes anything, you know, that we're doing. But just as a. I don't know. I, I'd be interested if they'd be willing to share what they. My, my take on the gentleman from Avoca, he, he looked like a deer caught in headlights to me at the earlier meetings. The gentleman from Howard, on the other hand. Seems perfectly comfortable in dealing with Kevin and the wind towers and he's. He's, he's bought in. I mean, there's, there's no discussion.
They've had a successful project too, you know, so I guess.
They are well suited for it. I, I.
Yeah, I've met with him on several occasions over the last couple of three years. Been talking to him about their projects and they toured it and. And he's been very popular, very acknowledged for quite a few years anyway and. But Kohaute is great at it. I think. We know where Judy's position is. Yeah.
I'm not so sure I know. I mean, at times she speaks out. Well, regarding the issues with them and then at other times she seems on board. I haven't been able to.
You know, her husband was Jim Hall. Who recently passed away. And they were extremely vocally opposed to any wind towers. And probably for good reason, because they had them right next to a computer drive up past where their house is.
Oh, yeah, it's stressful.
There's three or four.
Yeah. And the, the setbacks in Kohaute are woefully inadequate.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, to a lot of different houses, not just theirs, but to a lot of different houses.
So she may be. Basically opposed to them. But she gotta live with them, so she may be dealing at, at a realistic level.
Yeah, that's kind of the take I got.
Yeah.
I mean, this time around, they'd have availability to, or the ability to, to make them right.
Right, right.
That's true, because the, the last time. As far as I was concerned. It was a debacle, cause I was involved with Naples at that time and there were things that were. Done with their local laws that were not done properly, procedurally. They never notified the town in Naples that they were going to, uh. Be adopting zoning changes for the wind towers, things like that.
Now, do we have to do that?
You know, when we get, yeah, cause it's a land use law.
Okay.
This has to go down to Bath also.
Oh, yeah, that I know.
Yeah, we have to notify. All of the contiguous towns, which is for Pressburg, there's like seven or eight. As well as Yates County, Ontario County.
I found it interesting when Kevin was saying, um, that the Baron Mullen. Suggested, hey, let's get together and start negotiating. It's interesting that they've retained him as their. Lawyer, because he's been recommended by. The wind company, which kind of shocks me that you wouldn't go with somebody, cause he recommended him to us to review a lease and. Like, I'm not going with somebody that is recommended by the company. It's just odd to me that they would use up.
Aaron is, he's worked with a lot of farmers.
Yeah.
And that on, on their contract.
But at the suggestion of the wind company, though, that's the problem.
Not initially, well, I'm, I'm just. I'm just a couple, but, but, uh, I know, like, Miss Tacks, they, they recommended some of the other farmers, cause they were.
Well, they, they got together. I think Miss Tacks and a bunch, there were like four or five, uh. Farmers that got together, cause they were telling me that they got together and they, you know, went over it and, I mean, as, as a lawyer, I think he's good. I don't know, I don't have any, I have no experience, so I don't think he'd mislead them, but it's just odd that. The town itself would go with a lawyer.
With Pressburg, like, yeah, they're good.
Is it? Oh.
Leonard, the supervisor for Howard, ever give up what they're getting paid annually over there?
Give up.
Give up the information, what they're getting paid annually for, from the wind turbine? From the company?
Seems like we talked about that at one point, but I couldn't.
Can't be a secret, it's gotta be.
It's probably.
I can't remember what. That was, yeah, one of our. Set down one day. Coffee or whatever.
Man, I just. Keep on running over in my head, you know. This is gonna be, impact everyone. I mean, I, you're gonna see these things from down here, so it's a hamlet's gonna be affected. We talked a little bit before about it. I mean, to me, I, I think a minimum. A million bucks a year. Minimum. I also think we have a, a highway barn that needs to be built. It's gonna cost as well over a million dollars. I'd be more than happy to accept a first annual payment and paying for that.
Best way to do it to avoid. Impacting on taxes down the road is to. Have it go into capital improvements. And if it doesn't, all go into capital improvements, then the rest of it go into reserve funds.
Now, what about it? Like, equipment too could be considered capital, correct?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Yeah, anything that's more than five years. Life expectancy. That's a little breacher. It would be wonderful to get. The highway department. Pattern where they're replacing their equipment. On a regular basis. So they're not driving around with ten wheelers.
They're fun.
We're back on schedule.
We're in a ten year.
It's not gonna, from. From this point on, I don't, it is rare. It's tough to stand, it's cause you're. I can't, can't see it.
So I imagine it's my take on it. I don't, I think we need to get this information out to our expectations. As a group, what we feel is. And we need to tell Kevin, this is what, you wanna build these towers, this is what we want.
I mean, it would be nice to know what they're getting. And how much this is benefiting us, and I know it's hard to find, but you're right, that a million dollars is chump change to them.
Yeah, that should be public information. It's gotta be. It can't be secret.
But I mean, they have more towers than what we're talking about here, but we're also, we're dealing with six hundred and fifty foot color.
The discussions can be secret. Cause it's a contract negotiation.
Right.
However, when it's finalized. It's perfectly.
And the money transfers to the town.
Whatever they're.
No, I'm talking about what they're getting from.
Who's there?
The, the developers are getting as tax incentives and how much they stand to.
That's on us to find out.
Right.
They don't have to tell us.
No, I know they don't have to, but I would like to, you know, that's something that'd be interesting to explore, because that's a good comeback. Look, you're. You're getting a hefty chunk of money.
I think. Well, Bella would have a pretty good handle on something like that. I shall add that to the list.
I mean, cause you know, last time Kevin was here, I think he said about two, like two hundred and thirty-eight thousand, you know? That's chump change.
That's the petty cash.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They spend that on.
Oh, yeah, that's.
Shrimp and.
That's low, low, there's no dough.
Now, the host agreement, is there a timeframe? I know like the pilot is twenty years, correct? Typically, a pilot is twenty.
Pilot's based on the different projects.
Okay.
Depends. Can be less.
Okay.
I mean, we can make a host agreement. For what we want.
Okay.
Contract, right? I mean, we can go the life of the project, or life of our, life of the turbines. I would, I mean, for me, if you'd say from. The day you start digging to the day you start burying. After decommissioning.
Take the parts away.
Yeah. It's my thought. I mean. You know, a million dollars for our community, our site would, would be a huge help. I mean, you can go in there and give them some. Astronomical numbers, you want ten million dollars or a million dollars per structure. And they're just gonna laugh, they're just gonna move to take those eight structures and just move them south, and we're still gonna have to see the thing. You know, it's like being down in Naples, bitching about the wind turbines and every time you go on Main Street, you see them. Benefit, you get zero, zero dollars out of it.
Right.
And I don't wanna get in that situation either.
They did get some money out of.
Yeah.
Yeah. Fifty, fifty grand for the, because you could see the towers from the memorial town hall.
Yeah, the historic, yeah. But you're right, I mean, a hundred or a million is, is, for us, it's big money for our community. But for them, it's not painful, so it's a good compromise.
And for good faith, they need to build that million and a half dollar combo or highway barn that we need.
Yeah, we'll sign when they build the building.
That's right.
One of the things that we brought up, um, with Kevin here last time was, uh. You know, like flyby views and that kind of stuff. He says, one of the things that you guys will owe us is. From where, where do you wanna take these? Looks, you know, these things. And, and so I think that we've gotta give that some pretty good thought too, as to, uh. Yeah.
That's something else Lavella could do. We don't have to put any money on it for it.
I mean, you could take a couple, give them a couple of locations on our boundaries, you know. One from down here in the Hamlet, one from up on East Town. You know, one from up on the ridge, one from the north side of town, one from the south side of town, kind of give you.
Time to know, you can see. Do all kinds of directions from up there.
I mean, you go up Burke Road.
What, you want to, Burke Road?
East.
I made a mistake on the radio.
I might say more than once, I know. But, yeah, so I mean, again, I don't know what everyone's thoughts or what everyone's thoughts are as far as telling Kevin this is what we're thinking. I mean, it's something I think we should get out there.
Sooner we start talking to them about it. If the other towns don't wanna do it.
Which to me, my initial thought was tell them a million and a half and negotiate down to the million, but.
We're gonna start in two then.
That's a good point.
Worst they can do is say no. Or else goodbye.
Right. Just go, just move them down right off the property or down line.
But I think if we make a case, I mean, we can, you know, if we can show, okay, look, we are aware of your financial resources.
Right.
You know, that's the thing, it's not like, oh, we're just looking because, you know, we see deep pockets. Well, we know that you are getting this much money from, and from taxpayers. Therefore, in good faith, you should give some of that back.
Well, and I think overall, I mean, whether people are for them or against them, I mean, I think we've in good faith tried to look at our laws, make sure everyone was protected and make sure it could be done fairly.
One of the negative opinions from the other towns may be the fact that we've been ahead of them in terms of developing the wind law. And they probably know it.
Well, the only way we're ahead of them is because this is where the project was gonna be.
Correct.
But you would think that with the last go around in Coax and then potentially Pratsburg in Italy, had they been thinking ahead, they should have foresaw that this was coming. And then to see the governor's mandates of how much.
The whole thing's changed radically.
It has, but he's, but he's always had that goal of renewable energy, so they should have been forward thinking and saying, hey, you know what? These things are coming and we probably are, we're a desirable area and we probably ought to be thinking ahead. So that was on them, really.
Apparently, they don't have the negative groups in their towns.
But I know, even if you have a positive group, I think you still need good wind law.
No, I agree with you wholeheartedly. But what I'm saying is there was negativity that drove them south. Which is probably residual from the Italy-Pratsburg branch, Acca Gen. Because that was just a debacle from the beginning.
But I also think, I mean, people, there's, people on that side have a specific vision of what they want in their, in their land. I mean, what they want their land for. You know, they live.
Yeah, that's enough, and I have a vision what I want my land for, you know, and do I wanna tower on them? No, that's why I turned them down. But what you do on your land or?
But, but what you, like, what I do, like, if I had a turbine, if we had said yes, it would, it wouldn't have probably caused some serious noise, you know, disturbance to our neighbors, and so that's another factor, okay? Yeah, it's our property, we have the right to do that, but do we want to be bad neighbors like that?
Right, and that's why, I mean, obviously, we've done our homework here and trying to get that taken care of, it's not gonna affect them.
Personally, the first project turned down tower transmission line. Because they were going some, a big portion of my hardwood. And the family, and that, that was my, I says, no, I says, I give them an alternate route.
Right, right, and that's the thing, you, you want control over what happens on your property.
I feel it, it, it worked, because they say, no, go that way. But it's, I think we're, as far, we're pretty much where we should be, with exception to the money issue. And I'm certainly, and, and I, I know damn well, they, they know we're gonna, they're gonna have to negotiate. We're gonna negotiate up on that.
And is that negotiations a public meeting, or is that closed session against a contractor?
No, it can be closed session, negotiations. You don't wanna.
I'm not asking for, I just, I just wonder, like, is that an open meeting law issue? Or like you have.
No, it's like negotiating a union contract. You.
But we only still got like two board members there.
That's correct, now, if you wanna have it, the whole board there, then you gotta.
I would just have.
You can have an ad hoc committee to negotiate and give that committee, the two people on that committee, guidelines. And then they report back.
I nominate Tony.
I was just sitting here thinking.
Tony's not very good at negotiating.
Nah, I'm not.
Tony's million dollar number brings the eighty-five hundred dollar per megawatt up to twenty-two thousand.
Well, I think John Zero at one point was asking for thirty-five thousand or something like that.
No, I'm not saying this bad, I'm just saying it's.
Some work goes to a happy meeting. Kind of like, Kevin, I'll be handing you a wallet.
Wallet and wheels.
When it comes down to that.
Well, I'm more willing to sit down and owes.
I was secretary of John.
Yeah, but I think we need to, obviously, as a group, obviously, you know, and even maybe get some feedback from, from the, you know, the people that we run across who have talent and see what their thoughts are. But that's, it's a fine line, I think, of pushing for too much and we're gonna tell you to go pound salt, and then the next thing you know, they're just gonna.
Right, cause there's no provision for a host agreement, so they could put them up and.
Right.
So, I mean, you're right, I mean, we, you don't have to be greedy, but I think we should be respectful of the fact.
You know, this is a little mall, this is their office.
Oh, their office, yeah, so I mean, I think we have the right to ask for what is good for our town, but I always joke when people, you know, I tell them, like, the nice guy, you can, you can turn around on the lawn, I don't care, this is Pratsburg, not Pittsburgh. But there again, this is Pratsburg, not Pittsburgh, so we're not gonna ask for Pittsburgh-type money. But we should also be respectful of our taxpayers and get what.
Yeah, I mean, they've, they've already played dirty. I mean, my understanding, it was originally eighty-five hundred dollars per megawatt for the pilot, and then the community host agreement was a separate cash amount negotiated separately. And Kevin's last statements, it was the eighty-five hundred dollars included, the dollars that would be part of the community host agreement, so that's.
Well, and then when he told John Perry about the highway funds and the reclaiming of the roads and, oh, that would come out of the host agreement, it's like, no. Because you messed up the roads, you fixed them.
He's changed the rules along the way a little bit, so.
That's the other thing, that part of negotiation too, with the pilot, is it, what was it, it was fifty to the county, twenty-five to the town, twenty-five to the school?
That's, that was, that was stone, but that was.
That's what's typically what happens.
That's what happened, yeah.
So to me, I, what I'm, what I'm thinking anyways, is just a host agreement is a million, and then the pilot's a separate.
It should be, absolutely.
That's what the discussion has been, that the whole community agreement.
Cause he said early on, that we could discuss a host community agreement that.
It all comes out of the same pot of money, it's just a question of how big that pot is, right?
And to me, that even the pilot is, the majority should go to the town.
Absolutely, why is the county getting the most of it? I mean, we're the, the towns themselves are the ones that are hosting.
When I talked to Kathy Spencer initially, one of my questions was, how do we know how much money these guys are making, or these people are making off the wind pressure? She said, we don't know that. But there's gotta be somebody that knows that stuff, because it's not some secret.
Is that something our legis, or our, our assembly person or a senator could find out?
It needs a money guy, a money person, that knows the tax.
But could they, could they be the conduit to get to that person?
I don't know.
I mean, the missing piece is the aid, is the state incentives and stuff, that's the hard part.
That's what I was thinking.
Electricity goes forward, you can figure the.
There's gotta be somebody out there that knows how these things work. It's not like this is the first project, it's gonna lock. There's gotta be somebody that worked on one or two and doesn't anymore. You know, who might, Greg might know something, cause he worked for Acca Gen, sort of, didn't he?
He was a property manager though, like maintenance, property.
He may have picked up, he's still a dumb guy, he may have picked up on how it's, how it works.
But the finances are so like out there.
I don't think you'd ever figure out where all the money's coming from.
Probably not.
I mean, the last stimulus bill they tried to pass, it was pushing towards renewable energy, so, which I don't know what that did with COVID, but we're gonna add that in there too.
What does anything have to do, I mean, it's just, the whole thing is ridiculous.
Don't put down that road tone in place.
I was just saying, that's what.
No, no, we don't wanna go.
I think you're gonna find some shady, shady stuff in there if you start looking too deep, but you really should.
Well, that was Jamie Johnson's statement to Lana and I. We're not doing anything right now on the financing for the SOR, because once they pass the new stimulus, there's gonna be money flowing like you've never seen before.
Money that they printed out of thin air.
There's the librarian having a heart attack.
Just like this, just like this, Andy. Some for you, some for you, hot off the press. Can you, this one, I can't wait to watch, and then none for you.
What? What is she looking at?
I think it's.
She's looking at the computer, somebody's on it.
It's, it, no.
Oh, no, it's you guys. Transcription?
Yeah, transcription. Something didn't come out right.
I don't know what it was supposed to be, but it said watch the nuns.
Well, they are sketchy.
I wonder what you were looking, you kept laughing over there.
She laughing at. A lot of little voices in there had a really playing game during the night.
Well, anything else?
So I'm gonna try to get some feedback from talking to people through town about what their thoughts are.
Tony, we're over your forty minutes, but you were the one doing most of the talking.
I know, I have a lot of things going on in my head today.
I feel you're gonna find out, and I've talked to people that, that have no idea, and they don't seem to have, the only thing in their eyes when they say is, how much are we gonna get?
Right.
You know, and so some of them got the idea that it's gonna come back in their, their electric. And I said, no, you know, I mean, these, these stories get started and they go like wildfire. And, and this, it's just, like, if, if you got one on your property, you're responsible for the maintenance. I mean, you wouldn't believe the stuff.
The numbers are difficult to work with, I, I had a similar experience as you in talking to folks after the first open house, when they were talking about decommissioning costs. And someone was quick to defend Terigen with the number that they put out there for decommissioning, and I'm like, this is what it costs to decommission a single turbine, they haven't even put up that much.
Right.
You don't wanna be excited about this number, it, it, they're big numbers, a lot of people just aren't used to dealing with them. But it doesn't hurt to ask, I've seen you out there on Facebook, Tony, dipping your toes in the water out there.
I just get in there and just put a little something out there.
I'm gonna let Tony remember this one, it's gonna watch.
Bring back, let them bring it back again. Just see you a little bit.
It's a.
That's good to be out there.
I encourage, and I've encouraged them come to the meetings when we had.
Well, yeah, when we could.
You know, I said, come in and listen, but that's the last thing I wanna talk about.
We have a few people tonight.
Yeah, but it's, I just wish more would.
I wanna talk about the meeting protocols.
All right.
You had something today from the county saying up to twenty-five people, but the governor said ten for gatherings. So my suggestion is that we go totally remote, except for the town people there, cause there's already nine here.
Right.
Yeah, because I'm sure that.
I mean, wasn't that the twenty-five, wasn't that for a religious, a certain?
Well, it was fifty at one point for gatherings, outside.
Non-essential gatherings. Religion is at fifty percent.
Top capacity.
Capacity, and non-essential gatherings are at twenty-five people.
When you can't have way ten at lunch, or turkey dinner.
Right.
I'm on one of those Cuomo stickers, when he's peeking in the window. Get my hand on one of those. I was talking to Jim.
Hopefully, this, they get to, get to serve whatever, everybody get, get to sing that now, my goodness.
I was talking to my daughter, I told her, get ready, I said, you're gonna be the first one getting a chat, they're gonna test it out, military girl. Said, expect your kids to have two heads, or they're not staying with me.
Well, they should be smarter than granddad.
Might be double, might be double smart.
Two heads are better than one.
Yeah, I don't know. I was talking to Jim Allen this afternoon on some other things, he's a sheriff. I said, don't worry, Jim, I don't think you're a dictator.
He won't be peeking, it was in the courier, he won't be peeking in our windows.
Yeah, I like him.
I do too. Yeah.
He's good.
He took over Kohl's, he was the under sheriff, and then he ran it, he's a good, I like him a lot.
I like him.
Our sheriff, I, our sheriff's department does a hell of a good job. They came to pick up the election material, first of all, they delivered ballots, we were almost ready to have ballots, and the one sheriff deputy came and brought ballots, then another one came and had to pick up the bag, and I said, since, when did you become the courier for the Board of Elections? They're, you know, they do what they're told, but they do a good job.
They do, I like them.
We had several of our sheriffs in all the department, and they're understaffed very, very much so. They cover a lot of areas, a big county.
Second largest in the state.
Yeah.
Yep. No, they're. I swear, call the secreters, that stuff.
I'd make a motion to him, Jerry.
Second.
Motion made.
So you're all right with standing remote, except for the board?
Yeah.
Yes. Motion made and seconded, that this meeting be adjourned, all favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Well, got it.
All right.
No, no. Well, Tony said something early.